I'd like to welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, November 18th, 2024. We have six o'clock. Catherine, will you take the role?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Coonsy.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sauter.
Here.
And President Lino.
Here. If you rise and agree with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And that'll take us to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Nope. Seeing none. Okay, well then.
Public hearing. I can bring it up on my computer.
Oh.
I printed them out, but I have them in digital. Always prepared, Girl Scouts.
We have then a public hearing, and we're going to consider the proposed budget appropriations for the village's 2025 fiscal year for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. So I hereby motion to open the the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Okay. And we have pursuant to Chapter 65 of the Illinois compiled statutes, I hereby call to the, I hereby call to order, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. Pursuant to statute and ordinance, the notice of this public hearing was established, or published actually, on April 20, April 18th, 2024, in the Daily Herald.
October 18th.
Oh, I'm sorry. October 18th, 2024. So the clerk is our, oh.
We'll give you a pass. It sounds like you got a cold.
A little bit, thank you. Catherine, will you take the role in this?
We don't need to.
No.
Mayor, we don't need to.
Okay, wonderful. So I declare the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 public budget, or budget, open. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on the budget? This is gonna be a quick one. All right. Then I guess we really don't need to keep this open any longer, do we? Should we keep it open for a minute?
Do you have any?
Moment of silence. Okay. All right. Well, then I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second. Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to call this meeting, this public hearing, to order. This public hearing has been called by the Village Board of Trustees pursuant to Illinois Truth and Taxation Law to consider the proposed 2024 tax levy of the village of East Dundee. Notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald, and a copy of the notice and the proof of the publication have been presented and are made a part of the official record of this hearing. At this hearing, witnesses will be sworn, will not be sworn, I'm sorry, and a verbatim written transcript of the statement of test, or testimony given at the hearing will not be prepared. However, a recording of the hearing will be made on the village's equipment and posted on the village's website. So. So will the clerk call the order on this?
We're opening it.
We don't need to call it? Okay. Is there anybody who would like to present or question the board concerning this hearing item? No? All right. And I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Second.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any announcements, do we?
Nope.
No, great. Okay, then it's gonna take us to our consent agenda, if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve regular village board meeting minutes dated October 21st, 2024. I will also move to accept the warrants list in the amount of $244,973.02. I will move to approve a resolution establishing the regular meeting minutes, meeting dates for the Village of East Dundee Board of Trustees, Planning, Zoning and Historic Commission, Arts Council, and the Local Liquor Control Commission for the calendar year of 2025. And I will move to approve a resolution with respect to the potential reimbursement of eligible costs in a possible tax increment financing district, and to induce development interest on land on the southwest corner of Higgins Road and Beverly Road, and as authorized under the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, 65 ILCS 5/11-74-4-1, and 65 ILCS 5/11-74-4-3Q.
Second. I've got a question concerning item D. Is it appropriate to approve a resolution on a TIF, or expenses, I should say, that are TIF-eligible on a TIF that yet doesn't exist?
Yeah, it's just an inducement for the project, so it is appropriate to do it. That's what the board wants to do.
All righty. Anybody else have any questions, comments on the consent agenda items? So Catherine?
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular agenda items. Much like our last meeting, this one just consists of discussion items, so it'll start with the discussion in direction of the potential prohibition of sale of kratom, or kratom, and hemp products, including Delta-8 THC within the village. Erica, can you give us a little background on this? I understand what it's about.
Chief.
Chief.
Oh, chief. Florida's yours.
So the essence of the board memo that I wrote you guys is that this, this particular industry is not regulated. There's no FDA approval that's required for the sale of these products. And I'd like to just briefly discuss a situation we're dealing with currently. We took some complaints about a business in town that sells these products, investigated the complaint. We confiscated the product that was being sold, tested it, and it tested positive for the presumptive presence of THC or cannabis, right? Now, prior to the Farm Bill Act of 2018, which legalized hemp products, we, those, the testing kits that we had, anything that tested positive prior to cannabis actually being made legal, there was an automatic arrest back then, right? We now have to ensure that the product has less than 0.3% THC, and our testing kits don't have that capability. The only way we're able to do that is that we have to send it to a specialty lab, which is costly, in order to have it tested to see the exact percentage of THC that's in these products. And it goes, it goes, this all goes back to regulation. It's not regulation. So what we found is that product tested well over the 0.3% threshold, which makes it illegal without an actual cannabis dispensary license, which the shop is selling it without a cannabis dispensary license. So that's happening in East Dundee. That's the essence of my memo. Again, it's just not regulated. In the research that I've done, even the legal cannabis industry has an issue with this. Again, because they're skirting the law, being able to sell these products that contain over 0.3% THC without any regulation, oversight, or being taxed like the dispensaries are.
So if there's no regulation to these kind of products, is it safe to assume that there's no age limit or restriction on purchase?
And that's where our complaint initially came from, is that the individual, the parent who confiscated the product from the individual was, was under the age of 21, which as of now, you have to be over 21 even to purchase tobacco products.
So this is a problem. Well, we're talking about an expensive testing procedure or equipment to test something that isn't being regulated, that we know the individuals in this town are already selling against the law. It seems to me like it's a fairly easy question to answer. We just disallow it. And we do that through an ordinance.
That is.
And that's where I would stand.
I think it's a little more complex than just cut and dry, but I do understand where we are with, you know, because it's unregulated, there is too much flexibility in the percentage of THC that's in any given product. And there's actually, from what I understand, no way for even the store owner to know what they're purchasing.
They're relying on the people they purchased the product from.
Right.
In this particular smoke shop, the Sockeye Mountain East Dundee, they were purchasing it from Florida. They're relying on their testing.
Right. Is it specific that our test kits don't provide it, or all test kits? So I got an education in this, and it's basically like a high school science class again. So within the hemp product could be these cannabinoids and certain chemicals, and they're all different kinds. If there's enough concentration of any one of it, it could produce that, the fact you get when you smoke marijuana. So I don't think your kits can test for all of those different cannabinoids that might be contained at a certain level within, that's the issue. It would take a lab to really drill down to see.
Okay.
I think what she's asking is, is it just our police test kits or all police test kits?
I don't think any of them police test. I feel tests can do it.
So literally, there is no way.
It's a loophole, yeah.
It's a huge loophole. There is no way to actually test this without sending it to an expensive lab.
Correct.
And there is no way for the store owner to know what they even have in stock.
Right, they probably don't.
So the test kits pop positive, no matter what the percentage is?
It could be 0.1% THC, and it's gonna test positive.
Yeah, so, yeah, even traces.
Right.
That might be underneath the percentage limit that is allowed at these smoke shops. So however, it would be allowed if they had the correct dispensary license. Is that correct?
Correct.
The sale would be allowed. We just don't have, they don't have the correct license, and we don't have anybody in the village with that type of license at this point.
The closest one is West Dundee.
Yeah. Okay.
I would, I would say that in general, I am against prohibition. I don't think that A, it works, and B, it causes more unintended problems than it, than it solves real problems. The reason that products like kratom and Delta-8 exist is because of marijuana prohibition. And they're ways of getting around the expensive cost of marijuana. If somebody wants to get these products that lives in East Dundee, they don't have to go very far to get them if we don't sell them here. We aren't stopping people from East Dundee from being exposed to it. They can even get it online, I believe. What I would suggest, as opposed to prohibition, is regulation. And I did talk to people at I am, the IML conference, that said that you can create a cannabis-type commission, similar to our liquor commission, that we can license people to sell this and put whatever restrictions, rules, we want on them. And if they don't follow, we can simply take away their license, just as we do with liquor. Which, you know, I will remind everybody, is infinitely more dangerous than cannibals of any kind. You know, that's what I would say. I would say that the right move here is to create that sort of commission, impose stricter controls on how we sell this. We can, I think, you know, put maybe age limits even on it. I guess we'd have to ask our legal counsel on what we can and can't do, but, you know, I think we can do a better job. And if we do do this, we're going to put out of business a few different shops in this town that are law-abiding business owners.
He's telling us this shop in particular is breaking the law, so how do you get law-abiding?
Because that's only one of the shops.
Can I ask a question about testing? Would it be, so to Trustee Coonsy's point, what kind of restrictions could we put on? Could we force the business to test the product that they bring in, so that if it's over the legal limit, they know it is?
There's lab certification that you could require.
Yeah.
FDA doesn't approve even stuff in the dispensary that is federally, not something that they do. It's all state-regulated.
My, my answer is always your home rule. You can impose whatever regulation you want from a practical standpoint. I'm not exactly sure how that would work, you know, in terms of the business owner getting to you or to you or whoever. Because I completely understand, like, we have businesses that knowingly or not are failing the regulation, like failing the law on this. So we've gotta do something, right? Like, I don't wanna see another situation where we have to take product, send it off to testing, get everybody up in arms, and then at the end of the day, it is illegal. It is illegal product. Like, that's not a good place to come from.
It's illegal for them to sell them under the current license.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
I, I don't.
If they were a, if they were a dispensary and had a dispensary license.
But they had to give those state licenses.
Right, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Well, let's, let's not even, I guess, mention the failure on the state's part to regulate this, because it just seems to me that they've got control of cannabis products, but did they specifically write into the laws that are governing this product such that, well, we're not gonna look at anything below a certain level? I mean, if it's got THC in it, it's got THC in it. The amount is negligible. I mean, that's ridiculous. The thing I don't get is these, this, I don't believe for a minute this particular shop didn't know they weren't selling legal product. I, I mean, and for the, and the idea that we're going to put then on the shop owner the burden of testing their own product really is, I don't know what that's gonna get us, because you know that they're gonna come into compliance each time. Oh, well, we didn't know. I really don't think that, one, the amount of revenue lost to the village is going to be a significant amount. So putting anybody out of business by eliminating this product is not gonna have a great impact on the village. Putting then the responsibility of testing this product on the shop owner is a fool's errand. I mean, of course, it's gonna come into, into compliance. They're gonna.
They wouldn't be the ones testing it. It would be only buying products from lab-certified.
Yes.
Like certified labs, and they have the paperwork from the labs saying, this product, which this operator took it out of the packages and just sold it, not even in the original packaging. So that person would lose their license right away, and that would fix that problem.
Well, it, it seems to me.
If you don't mind at this point, they did produce data sheets, lab data sheets, that said it was under. And when we sent it to the specialty lab, it was over.
And significantly over, correct?
Significantly over.
Yeah, and they absolutely knew it. In this case, I'm absolutely, I would be willing to bet the farm that they knew what they were doing was illegal.
That's speculation. That doesn't.
But regardless, I, I, I'm getting the sense that we're trying to figure out a way to make this work, when really, we don't need to. I mean, yeah, we are home rule, so we can eliminate it. And I just can't see how it's gonna benefit the village or her citizens to allow the sale of this product or anything like it, when currently, we're not enjoying any revenue from it. And all it's doing is, is causing more problems and things for you to manage. I don't get this. I.
Well, the one product that is FDA-regulated that I could find researching is the Epidiolex, which is a CBD medication for pain or people with.
Pseudomyalgia?
Yeah. People who have tremors and issues, the high amounts of CBD with a small amount of THC, which this would be flagged as, even with the trace small amounts that are used in this medication that is FDA-approved, we would be making those illegal by doing this. So regulating it could be anything over a certain amount or anything that's not lab-certified, and that we do regular testing of the few businesses that do it. You said the testing takes months, so regularly test it quarterly or randomly, and then they get flagged once or twice, and then they're done, and they can't do it ever again. But a legitimate shop can function in that scenario, and we don't make illegal things that the FDA did approve.
There's also the Illinois House Bill 5903 that was just referred to the Rules Committee in November 12th. So just like a week ago, that is in, like, it's in progress right now to reform the hemp regulations. So I think that it might be premature for us to.
And that's actually being pushed by the legal cannabis industry.
Which I, I still.
Absolutely. There's nobody, there's nobody that would want us more to ban this than the legal cannabis industry, because it's taking revenue from them. You know, that's, that's why that they are pushing those, you know, regulations.
I don't necessarily think that that is the case. I think that you have many ways to look at this, but we have a business owner who's going to be prosecuted for this, and who thought, perhaps, that he was selling a legal product. So you have people being put at risk selling it. You have people being put at risk buying it, buying something that they think is under the legal limit that isn't. So at some point in time, the state or the federal government needs to step in and regulate it so that everybody can buy a safe product if they wanna buy a safe product, or not sell it at all. If there's products that are FDA-certified, if we go the direction of not allowing the unregulated products, then that would be a regulated product. If the FDA has certified it, I would, I would think that would fall under the regulated category. So we could say, anything that's unregulated, we wouldn't be allowed for sale. Anything that is regulated would be allowed for sale. So we are in this period of time where it's a little squishy. And I think that a lot of the, a lot of the stores that are selling this, you know, it's a, I wouldn't say it's the majority of their sales, probably a portion of it, but I don't think that, you know, what's the repercussions if you're arrested for selling the product? Like, are they still gonna be able to be in business? So we either let them keep doing this, catch them doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, and then they're out of business, or we don't let them sell the product and they stay in business. So I get it, it's a tricky situation. There's not a good route here. But, you know, we have other communities doing the same thing, banning it. So if enough communities ban it, hopefully there'll be enough groundswell to regulate it, if there is a market, a true market for it. But right now, you just have the confusion of parents seeing their kid come home with something that looks like cannabis, and it's not cannabis, and then they have to understand that it's, is it 3% or is it 4%? Or is it legal or is it not legal? But what, what a parent really cares about is, is this, what, what is, is this safe for my kid to ingest or consume? So I, I, I understand the concern about, if, if these products are helping people into the true medication, all for it, let's make sure that people can buy them. But if we're putting, if we're allowing products to be sold to people in the community that we're not sure the safety of, or the levels of, or whatever, that gives me a lot of concern.
Me too, in fact. And I would also add that I would be concerned that anybody, any parent who's wondering about whether their children are ingesting a certain product and whether it's legal, would lead me to ask about the liability in the event that it isn't, or that it's higher than what is legal. Could they then not only sue that business, but sue the town of East Dundee for allowing that business to take place? So I'm wondering about any future liability on that. The other, to your point, Erica, as far as if we don't allow it at all, we're gonna allow businesses to stay in business selling whatever. They just won't be able to sell this. So I don't think it's necessarily the case that we're putting anybody out of business by taking one particular item off their shelf. So.
Maybe we should ask.
Well, yeah, but what we're talking about here, Scott, now is growing government to regulate this on our part, and.
What is more big government than banning something outright?
Isn't, it isn't big government. That's just alienating it.
That's very big government. That's very big government.
Well, we have to enforce the, the, the regulation of it when they're selling it and they're doing so illegally.
So you're doing the same thing.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Are you saying that there's no.
What is it to the benefit of the government of East Dundee to have these businesses? It's not to the benefit of the government of East Dundee. It's, it's just simple human liberty that these businesses and people have decided to create this business out of their own vote, uh, prerogative. You know, that, it's not, not everybody is here is to benefit you and the government of East Dundee, okay? That's not the purpose of everybody that lives in this town.
Scott, I'm suggesting that what we have is a business in our town that is selling a product illegally.
Yes, and that has been done. He is going to be prosecuted for that. There's also businesses, like the guy that's on, right in our downtown, that, you know, prides himself as somebody that caters to veterans who are suffering, and we're going to tell him that he can't do that either. Do you think he's a bad person? Because he's selling this stuff to veterans that are suffering, and he's trying to relieve that suffering?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, no, I'm not. I'm saying if there are any unregulated products in the state of Illinois that are being sold in East Dundee, then we should, until the state begins to regulate.
I'd like to offer just a larger perspective.
Yeah, sure.
So I, I hear everyone's different perspective. I think the role in the discussion for this board, and this board's role, is to do your fiduciary duty to the village as a whole. What's best for the village as a whole is health, safety, welfare of the village, and that includes all citizenry. And so if you're looking at it from that perspective, I think the board has to ask itself, is the board leaving a hole for unsafe products to be sold? Should the state have regulated this? Probably. They left a hole here, and now they're letting the local governments pick up the slack for this. There might be some regulations coming down the pipeline, but I think in my discussions with the chief, we don't really know what's in all these products. I mean, it takes a lab of serious caliber to drill down on these products to understand what's in them. And they may be unsafe. So I just wanna offer that larger perspective.
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone is saying, let's leave it as it is now. Well, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but it sounds like everybody wants to fix the problem. It's the question of, you ban everything and not have enough knowledge to know that you just banned something very important to a group of your population you didn't understand? So I'd rather have more information come in and more research. Invite the businesses that do sell it to have a chance to speak to us what their argument is, 'cause I don't claim to be an expert on this, and the research I've done is a little bit. But I feel like understanding maybe from a community survey, does everybody in the whole community just want this out of here? Or half of them really find use for it? I don't think anyone wants it to go to kids, so just like alcohol and cigarettes, we shouldn't be allowing that, and that we can either regulate it or ban it, but I don't think anyone is saying, let's give drugs to kids.
But Chief, you did indicate that someone under the age of 21 is able to buy this product, correct?
It was one of our original complaints, yeah.
So there's no current age restrictions on Delta-8 in our town, 'cause we haven't made rules?
There should be a restrict, the smoke shop should not be allowing anybody in under the age of 21.
Okay.
So there is rules being broken, but a gas station might have these. There's no age restriction there. So can they just buy it in a gas station because there's no rules applied by us or state or federal?
If the employee is doing the right thing, they're checking ID, but.
So the question is, if you're 16 years old, can you go into a gas station and buy a hemp product legally?
Yes.
No, no, no.
Is there, is there a current regulation?
It's not legal, no, to do that.
So what, where is that?
Illegal.
Is that in the, in our code, or is that in a state law?
They have to be over 21 to buy any ingestible smoke product.
And that's a federal rule or a state?
Can you help me out on this, Scott?
Like, I know it's a rule.
I don't know if it's in your code. It's a state law.
Okay. Is there any communities that are currently regulating this versus outright banning it?
Not that I'm aware of.
I, there are, and I can get you that information.
That would be great.
There are Illinois communities that are on this.
And there is this one, literally, this, the House one is saying all of this, 21 and over, like, it's all, it's all on there. So I don't know how quickly something goes through, but it's like, if you say we'll do something that's regulated, then this will be regulated soon, so that it could be included. So there's that, too.
And that we could regulate in the meantime if we chose to go that direction. 'Cause I think we do enforce alcohol being sold to minors. We tested. If somebody tried to buy it, who shouldn't be able to, then they can lose their license. We could even be stricter and say, you only get one accident, and then you're done, or as strict as we want. But it should be enforced if there are laws and not just ignore it, I guess.
What, what is the cost to send it to the lab?
Roughly $500.
Fifty five hundred?
Five hundred.
Oh, 500.
So I'm, I'm sorry, Chief. So I'm, I'm sorry, chief, I'm sixteen years old. I can go into this smoke shop and buy this product or I can't?
No, you have to be twenty-one to go into the smoke shop. By law, by state law.
Even a gas station, you have to be twenty-one to buy it?
You have to be twenty-one to buy it at a gas station.
Yes.
So can I ask how it was when we made this raid on this and we took eight thousand dollars worth of their product off the shelves? Did that come about to our attention?
It started with two anonymous complaints.
Okay.
And then we sent in on our undercover, purchased it, looked like cannabis. We tested it, it tested to be cannabis. And that's how that all came about. We got a search warrant.
That individual wasn't age restricted or anything like that? Was somebody well over the age of twenty-one?
Yes, it was a police officer.
And it did come back from the lab finally, or it takes?
It came back. It's significantly over the point three percent threshold.
I, I just can't figure out how it is that the state of Illinois with the cannabis laws that they put in place can say. Well, we're only gonna restrict it to this point. Anything below it, we're not gonna look at. That's like saying, well, there's no, no regulation of light beer. Because it's only, you know, four percent alcohol as opposed to the stuff that's eight. We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna enforce the rules when it comes to low alcohol beverages. It's, it's insane. I don't understand that. I mean, I realize it's a rhetorical kind of, but, I mean, unless anybody can explain to me why they don't restrict it to all levels. I mean, THC is THC. What difference does it make whether it's, well, point three or whatever or not? I don't get it.
There are differences in, say, you go to North Carolina, you can't go to a grocery store and buy whiskey. Like, you have to go to a special licensed facility that's allowed to sell whiskey. Like, each state does have differences on how they handle high concentration versus low concentration of alcohol, for example.
Same with Idaho.
Well, but in every instance, no matter what the concentration of the alcohol, it's regulated to some degree.
Yeah, they should all be regulated.
In this instance, they're saying that below this certain point, when it comes to a THC product, the state has no say in the matter. Or they're just taking a hands-off approach on anything that's.
That's not how I heard it.
I don't think that's how I heard it.
We wouldn't be talking about this if it was any different.
You know, we're, we've been selling alcohol in the United States, regulated across different states. For hundreds of years.
Wow.
Right? Tax stamps, a hundred years.
I guess, my ass is prohibition.
Yeah, my, my, yeah, I forget about that little one. But, but this is a, this is, this is an, it's, it's new. It's ten year, it's less than ten years since it was legalized and started to regulate. So of course you're gonna find, you're gonna find, um, issues in, in little areas where. That weren't considered when the first regulation was put into place by the state of Illinois. And that's where I see this, this kind of being. So, you know, we're, so we gotta clean, clean it up or make a decision on how we want to handle it. If, if, if we're, if we have a concern over it. And until the state puts through this next House bill, whatever Tricia said, um, fifteen nine oh three.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask for clarity on the point that I understand different than Jeff, or I don't understand quite? But when it's tested in the lab, that's to see if it's above a certain percentage of THC that makes it illegal? Or that just shows that it is THC which is illegal?
I can tell you if it's THC. Our, our, our garden variety testing kits will tell you if it's THC. You just can't tell us a percentage without sending it to the specialty lab. That's the only place that we can get an actual percentage.
But the legality comes into question when it is concerning the, the percentage of the THC in the product. It, it's not illegal to sell a product that has THC in it.
Less than point three percent, right?
Ri- right. Well, well, but what I'm saying is that for all those products that are less than point three. Um, there's no control over it, no regulation. So the state goes ahead and leaves it to us. And that in itself.
Have no effect? Like, the point, lower than point three, is that because it's so small it wouldn't make an effect on you?
It's not psychotropic.
And that, but I thought we were testing to see, is it Delta eight versus Delta nine? Delta nine being at a dispensary, Delta eight being this hemp derived. But the concentration amount I don't understand yet. Like, we're testing to see if it's Delta eight because they are allowed to sell that. But if it was Delta nine, they aren't allowed to sell that. But I wasn't aware of where it becomes, is it point three percent? And now you have to start regulating it to only twenty-one years old or older? But there's a certain threshold you can't even sell because it's too high of a percentage of Delta eight THC?
I followed it.
I thought it was confusing to me. Okay, thank you.
One hundred percent, if it's over point three, it's illegal. Unless you have a cannabis dispensary license, of which you cannot obtain one in the state of Illinois right now because they're so limited. So, I mean, there's lots of flaws in, in this law. I mean, part of it is we're constricting supply of legal cannabis by not allowing more places to sell it. Which drives the price up, which then creates an industry that we see right now that's offering these products that are not legal. But I think that, I had a question. So if you, if we wanted to sort of make sure that the rest of the products in the community were under the threshold. Can we go and test them at those stores without a search warrant?
We could ask for consent, but without a search warrant.
Couldn't just buy it?
So if, if we bought it.
Could buy it, yeah.
If we just bought it and then tested it, and then it came back as over, would we still be able to not allow them to sell it? If we didn't follow the legal procedures?
That would be, kind of become a business license issue at that point.
Yeah, absolutely, business license.
Like a liquor license.
Business license.
Like regulation.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's what I'm thinking where we are right now, because we still want to get to the budget discussion. Maybe we continue this discussion in, at our next meeting. Or in two, two meetings when we have a chance to find out what other communities are regulating this. We'll also go out and test the other products in the community at the other places that we haven't tested yet. And see, uh, what they, I mean, it's gonna take months to get those results back, but at least we can have a barometer of where we are. And, and then we can make further decisions after that. Does that sound like a reasonable next step?
Yeah.
I think as we, as we go to purchase the product to test it at these other places. Also understanding what the percentage of their business is, is really, how big is, how big is the issue?
How does that, you, you're saying that we have to consider the amount, the percentage of their business that this product represents?
I am saying it's, I am saying that it's good to understand. If this is just a random thing, that's not gonna really affect their business, or if it is.
Or if it's a high concentration of what they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, what was the date you said the state was looking at?
Um, it was on November twelfth.
November twelfth?
Yeah.
So.
It was referred to Rules Committee on November twelfth.
And so they're looking to shore this loophole up? Is that what the?
Yeah, it's in committee right now, so when it goes through, crossed over and then passed.
You never know. I mean, maybe the state will just do us a favor and cover it and we won't have to deal with it. Between now and the time we were gonna ask anyway.
I mean, liquor is covered and we still regulate that locally.
So.
I think we should still regulate this locally personally.
Scott, I, 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 I like where you're going with this. And is it a, a matter of an evolution of the liquor and, and cannabis commission or committee?
Yeah.
And roll that into that?
Maybe it's the same one, maybe it's a different one.
Yeah, yeah.
And another question to consider is, can it be taxed and a license paid for in a way that covers any costs of. If we have to do periodic testing and law enforcement to, like, it shouldn't cost us or the public any money. So what revenue through taxes or through licenses can we add to it?
Right. I mean, the, the cannabis license is a hundred thousand dollars to the state.
The court.
You know, that's what it is, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if, you know, we made our own license, would we not be at liberty to charge whatever we want for that license? So I'm not saying we should charge a hundred thousand dollars, but we could certainly charge enough to cover the costs of this commission.
That would include X number of testing a year.
Yeah, periodic, random testing.
Or, or charge so much that it would make sale, sale of the product profitable, you know? You could do that too, if you wanted to, to put the heavy hand out.
I, I would just say also, you know, uh, whatever your feelings on cannabis. It's probably not going away at this point. I mean, it's not only illegal in Illinois, it's a legal product. But in most states in the United States, it's legal and federally, who knows? But I would imagine pretty soon, uh, it'll be legal federally as well. So I think we should address it, uh, rather than ban it personally. That's what I think. And that's all I'll say about it.
I agree.
I agree.
I, I concur.
All right, bud.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have direction or? Okay, then it'll take us to our next item, which is a discussion on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Brandis, would you like the floor? Are we gonna have one more budget meeting before we possess, be submitted, what, what, December fifteenth?
We will have a meeting on the second, December second to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so this is our last go around?
Um, yes, kind of. Um, there we go. Okay. Nope, this isn't the right one. Can we get into the folder?
There you go. Why is that?
I just wanna hit the bulbs. Not, is that there?
Um, it's not there.
I don't know. It's weird.
Yeah, it was flickering, and then this is what it landed.
This is my download.
Yeah, I think, uh, this PC. You need to get the scrub?
Yeah.
There it is.
Apologies. Um, so we'll just go over a brief overview of some of the changes that we need board direction on. Specifically, there weren't any changes to the budget from our last discussion per se. But just some things that I wanted to pull out so I make sure we get more input from the board. And we'll start with revenue changes. So we are proposing for a tax levy increase, a five percent increase over the prior year. Um, so we'll increase it from seven hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred three dollars to seven hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars. And this is roughly about thirty-five thousand dollar increase from last year.
Can I stop you right there with, we're talking about a property tax increase.
Yes.
Aren't we allowed, uh, four point nine nine percent, anything above which needs to go?
Five percent, yes.
To the public, who we have to get?
No, we, so we, as long as we do our truth in taxation public hearing, which we did.
Just did.
Um, we're fine. We do, we are home rule. We do have a self-imposed, um, restriction or cap. On how far or how much we increase our levy to, but we are within the five percent range.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This, because it's on property taxes. We don't actually have property taxes that go towards the running of the village. Is this for the police pension?
All of it go, one hundred percent is dedicated to the police pension.
Just checking, thank you.
Yes.
But we're not increasing it five percent.
Yep, so my next point is that we will be capturing the EAV growth from new construction over the prior year. Also capturing the growth from our expired TIF, which is the Prairie Lakes TIF. It went offline, um, in twenty twenty-three. And this is our final year to capture the TIF increment in that year. So to, after twenty twenty-four, this will be, um, the EAV growth within that TIF will be eligible for all taxing bodies. To kind of capture the incremental growth that was only going to the village within the TIF funds. So it's not really an increase to our residents or businesses. They were already paying that, um, tax amount. It's just being distributed a different way.
I get that. But when this throws up in the paper, it's not gonna say five percent. It's gonna say whatever that changes from the seven.
Yes, so it will be a total of twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent is what they're saying.
For sure.
I just want that to be right about.
Yes.
If you can say, uh, correct that last time, I think we did not capture that. But then that money doesn't go to people's property tax bill to alleviate it. It just gets grabbed by the fire in the schools, basically, because it is up for whoever taxing bodies to grab. But if nobody does, then another one does. Is that correct?
So however, we, our tax portion of the bill is only point eight percent of the total tax bill. So yes, the fire department has already reached out to get the EAV growth for the Prairie Lakes TIF. So they do plan to also capture their portion of the, um, taxes that were, were collected as incremental taxes to the village. And majority of it is split between the fire department and, uh, school districts.
Can someone help the English major in the room understand what this means as a bottom line for the residents?
I like to s- to explain it like this. We, you know, it's like a pie. Everybody gets their own little slice. And with the TIF expiring, the pie got so much bigger, and now there's so many extra slices. And if the school district decides, I'm gonna take my share, then it gets smaller again. And if we decide we're gonna take our share, which we're only taking our share, we're not taking greater than our share, it's gonna get smaller again. Nobody, not everybody, I should say, has confirmed that they're gonna take their share. So if the school district does, but the county doesn't, and the township doesn't, but we do, and the fire district does. Your pie just gets a little bit smaller, not always smaller. So the residents will see a reduction in their property tax. Because what they previously were paying will get lumped in with what's coming in from Prairie Lakes. If everybody takes exactly their share, township, county, or King County, us. Basically, everybody would stay flat, except for that we're proposing this five percent.
Alright.
So if you take thirty-five thousand dollars, which is the difference between last year's and this year's. And apply it to the households in East Dundee, people are looking at a fourteen dollar increase in the property taxes.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that in the way my brain can comprehend.
Maybe more than that. I didn't exactly run the math, but it's probably not more than.
I think it would be, I think it, I, I think that kind of illustration, so we won't know this though?
Because everybody hasn't told us.
Right. So when?
Everybody has until the last Tuesday of the, of December to file their levies with the county. So we will know in late December, but they would have had to pass something on their board agendas in order to levy something. So we can sort of try to do some research and scrub out what everybody else is doing.
You will see a difference on your tax bill and how that is reallocated going forward. Especially if you were within the Prairie Lakes District. You'll see, like, you know, TIF number one will say zero now. And then you'll see it reallocated or those dollars reallocated to various different agencies.
Okay, so we're saying it could go down or it could go up a maximum of the proposed five percent, but it will be no more than that five percent, correct?
For the village's portion.
For the village's portion. Totally understand we're only talking about what we can control.
Yes.
And before next meeting, I would like to do the dollar diagram of what the split is. So that we can share that and put that on the website as far as what the village takes of the overall tax bill.
Yes, please. That's very helpful for people to see, because I think everybody hears property taxes are going up. And it's like, no, no, it's not five percent of your property tax bill. It's five percent of the village's portion of your property tax bill. It's ten dollars, it's fifteen dollars.
Whereas when you say, your taxes will go up X amount of dollars based on a one hundred thousand dollar.
Yes, we can work on that.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, the explanation was extremely helpful.
And then it all goes to the police pension?
Correct.
Yes.
Um, so as you see, the total tax levy recommendation is nine hundred and fifty thousand two hundred dollars. We are budgeting to contribute one point, almost one point three million to the police pension this twenty twenty-five budget cycle, and we will be supplementing the difference between the tax levy and, um, the requested amount, which is about three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. We will be supplementing that amount within a general fund.
And is the, um, one point three, um, contribution within the recommended amount that we've got scheduled out?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
That pension amount of one point two million, almost one point three, seems to go up every year. Is it going to just go up infinitely for the rest of our lives? I mean, it seems like the more we pay.
Well, we are playing catch-up because we're only, we're only about sixty percent, fifty-eight percent funded, so we are trying to catch up to that.
Like, I remember going to one of these police pension fund meetings, and they said, oh, yeah, if we were current, that, that amount would be like a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
That's the time value of money.
Right, so again, this is a question I ask, I feel like, every year. Why, why is it not a good idea to get a bond for the amount that we're behind and put it in now so that we, A, are cutting down our amount that we're paying to this every year instead of paying on the bond, but we're using that money to make money?
That was a really good idea in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, when interest rates were like extreme low.
I did ask that in twenty twenty, twenty-one, and I was told it wasn't a good idea.
I wasn't here in twenty twenty, so sorry about that. So a lot of communities, I would say a lot of.
I know some people have done this.
Communities did, I mean, Skokie borrowed two hundred million dollars in, in twenty twenty at one point eight percent.
Nearly that much.
Because they thought exactly that, they could invest that, they could make greater than one point eight percent, they could reduce their annual payments, and it's a risk. It's, it's definitely, like, you have to have a stomach for that, you have to believe that you're gonna make that money up, and you're gonna, you know, be able to fund it at, at the proper level, and then it's all gonna work out. And sometimes it does, and that's why people's pension obligations are legal, but sometimes it doesn't, and then the story is even more painful, but what, what our story is, is that we have a manageable amount of money that we're behind. Closing in on sixty percent is, is very good from, I think, ten years ago, we were, you guys were in the forties, so it was.
Yeah.
It, it's getting better.
And I get that, but at the same time, this number goes up.
I know, and it'd be much more satisfying if it were going down, but.
Or at least staying the same.
But you can't get cheap money like that at a fixed rate, correct? I mean, if you get one point eight or two point two percent, it's practically free money, as long as the interest rates don't move. You know, I mean, it, because we're not gonna be able to get, we're not gonna be able to get a two point two percent rate on a bond fixed.
Right.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a variable bond, we know that. So to your point, as long as the market doesn't tank, we're good. But if it does, and the interest rates go up two, three, five percent, then, then we're in the hole, we're on the back end.
We only borrow at fixed rate. Uh, we don't borrow.
We can borrow.
We only borrow a variable rate if it's a short-term bond.
What would it do to our credit rating? Because if I have, uh, you know, fifty thousand dollars with a credit card debt, and I get a fifty thousand dollar consolidation loan, my credit score goes way up. Does that do the same thing for us? If, are they looking at this police pension debt as a debt that's not secured at this point, basically?
So what they're looking at is a, a larger window. They're not just looking at what are we funding this year, they're looking at what is our strategy, what has our strategy been? Are we consistently exceeding or meeting what the recommendation is? And are we on a pathway to fully funding? So, you know, the state lost twenty forty, or twenty forty, so not a lot of time left. But in twenty forty, we should be a hundred percent funded, and this payment every year should be back down to a hundred and fifty thousand. So it'd be really satisfying if we were gonna get there in five years or six years, and maybe we can if we start shifting some of our money towards this and, and not other things, and we may have the opportunity to do that in a few years. But right now, while we're closing in on sixty percent, interest rates aren't great, we don't have a lot, a lot of other really good options, we have to just keep continually chipping away at it until the point where we can reduce.
The other, the other thing to consider is if we were to buy, buy it out for this obligation, we gotta pay that bond back.
No, we, we have to pay this.
No, I realize, but it's, you gotta pay this, or you gotta pay.
Like, I would like to at least see the math. What is that, what is that rate? What will our contribution be the day after we have it fully funded? What is our payment on that bond? If we can't get that quoted? When you add those two numbers up, are they more or less than one point two seven two million?
If we were to borrow, to, you know, consider the possibility that we could make more money by borrowing it, you can't take that whole two hundred million or whatever that you borrow and, like, invest it tomorrow in the stock market, because what if it all evaporates? You have to invest that over time, so, you know, Skokie took that two hundred million, and they, they're investing it over five years. So they're not even fully invested in it yet, and by spreading out that risk.
Yeah, but we would have the money on hand at least. Going towards that cash, uh, balance, increasing the interest that we're already getting from that, which is a significant amount. I mean, we would have the money on hand either way, if it's in our police pension fund, or if it's in our hand, it's, it's working for us. This debt is just working against us all the time. There's, it doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be self-healing. It seems to be getting worse. I'm, you know, I'm just throwing this out.
I hear you. But we also have to understand that over the last three years, we've increased the number of full-time police officers that are working at the police department, so that the number is increasing for head count as well.
Okay, that's fair.
And also, and another point.
He's gone.
All right, I don't wanna, just curious.
I mean, I, I, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting argument, we could probably get our bond counsel to do an evaluation of, you know, if we did want to do pension obligation bonds, like, what would that look like, and what could we expect to see? They could probably run that calculation for us for, free, because they're in the business of selling those bonds. And we can see what that looks like, but the, the big picture is a great story here.
Hmm.
I get really excited about pension funding. We're doing great, you guys are doing great, making good decisions, putting this money aside. The other thing is, we haven't had enough years to tell how the consolidation is working in our favor, so, you know, the, the police pension consolidated, what, two years ago?
Less, about a year, less than a year.
So we haven't, you know, now we're getting, supposed to be getting larger returns, because they're pooling the investments, so.
I did, at the Hyneman Conference, I did go to that, uh, meeting as well, and they did say it was doing well. And, uh, we're excited about the direction it's going and all that. There were some holdouts that were challenging the locality of it, and they lost. Uh, so they are now going to put their names out, even more. So it is working well, uh, but, yeah.
Well, if, if the consolidation is in place, is there any relevance to the twenty forty date anymore? I mean, were you still under that obligation? Because it seems to me like the whole idea of consolidating the effort with municipalities in Illinois was because we're, no one's gonna make twenty forty. I mean, there are five, I don't, I've only known five counties in the state of Illinois out of fourteen hundred that are a hundred percent funded right now. Most of them are way below us, and we're in mid-fifties, you know.
But isn't, isn't this contribution amount based on getting fully funded by twenty forty?
This is actually Lotterbox, um, recommended amount, so it's to get us funded in twenty thirty-six, I believe, or twenty thirty-eight. So it's actually quicker than the state's, uh, plan, accelerated plan, so that's why the amount is different. We don't have the op- IPO fifth, um, actuary yet, so I don't know what the state's recommended contribution would be for us for twenty twenty-five yet, so we just budgeted Lotterbox.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I like that, because more money in today is less money in tomorrow, so, I mean, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm glad that we are able to hit that easier than we have been in the past.
Yeah.
I'd rather be a little more aggressive today than have to be real aggressive in the other departments.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I don't have any concerns that we're not gonna make twenty forty or twenty thirty-six. Like, we're in a very good position to continue to chip away at it over time, so that doesn't keep me up at night. Whereas there's a lot of communities, even the one that I previously worked for, that I would be very worried about it right now, and they say we aren't, usually.
Well, not to get off it, but there's no consequence to not making twenty forty, I mean.
Well, the consequence is that you're continuing to rob your residents of tax dollars that could've been put towards something more fruitful, and just.
Yeah, when we're talking about, you know, poor money management, that, that's one thing to consider, but it's not like the state of Illinois is gonna come and hit you with a big stick because you didn't make the twenty forty date. You know, I mean, there are a lot of towns in Illinois that just, there's no way on earth the numbers work, so they'll never be able to get there, so what do you do?
Let's just worry about us and not everybody else.
I was just saying that, you know, we're talking about where we are, where we need to be, and why, so.
So to tidy this conversation up, is, are we generally going in the right direction? Are people comfortable with five percent?
Yes.
Page one.
Okay. The next, the next tax is the grocery sales tax. Uh, the state of Illinois was collecting this tax, and it is set to expire at the end of next year. We are allowed to implement an ordinance that will allow the local municipalities to capture that tax, and, um, this will not show any sort of increase to our residents as far as sales tax, it's just capturing what the state is no longer going to be cap. Now, they will collect the tax on our behalf and redistribute it, I don't know what that means going forward, but, um, this will not be implemented in twenty twenty-five, although you will see the ordinance, and it will take effect in January twenty twenty-six.
I just have one question, in the packet, it says that if we don't do this, we'll be losing them. I don't understand that, because the running now goes to the state.
Yes, so they will no longer be collecting the grocery sales tax.
Exactly.
So the, so the state collects it, but we get a portion of it back.
Oh, okay.
So if we don't do this, we will lose the portion that we get.
I see. So what, was the state's previous tax one percent, and we got a portion of the one percent, and now we're getting the entire one percent? Is that what we're saying?
Uh, Kelly, can you clarify on that one? I'm sorry, I lose a question. So the grocery sales tax that the state currently collects on our behalf and then remits to us, do we get the entire one percent?
Yeah.
And previously, they charged one percent and gave us a portion.
They gave you a portion, they, they gave you guys the one percent, the whole tax, but now it'll go directly, now if you choose to pass the tax, it'll go directly to the village.
So it's one percent that we've always gotten?
Right.
It's just the state collecting it versus us.
Yeah.
Right, so I misspoke when I said we got a portion of it, we get all of it.
Okay.
So does, um, products that are sold at a gas station, convenience store and so forth, fall under the grocery store tax? I don't think it does, does it?
So it's definitely just food stores, you'd have to be careful about, like, a CVS-type situation or whatever, because then it gets into pharmaceutical and medicines and all of that, so.
So do we know with this one percent that we previously began in the state, like, what we got last year for it?
Well, we get just a lump sum from the state as far as sales tax.
Okay.
So I, I don't know specific, yeah, for a sense. We can probably, sorry, we can probably do some digging.
So I, you know, was in a meeting with Algonquin, because Woodman's, and so this was very consequential to them, if the state was. So with, originally, the state said, Buddha, just give it, and there was no carve-out for the municipalities and have some way to recoup it. And then Illinois municipalities started lobbying and said, hey, every community is gonna be losing a lot of money, and for Algonquin, it was, it was like eighteen million dollars a year, it was like crazy, all crazy amount of money. So ours is obviously not that, we don't have Woodman's, but we do, you know, to buy a banana at the gas station, it's, it's apply, it, it does apply. So there's, it's meaningful to us in that if we didn't continue to do it, it would, we would see a decrease.
Hmm.
Yeah, we can, um, if you, if you can find, if you can give it separated out, that looks like.
Our next tax is the municipal gas tax. We are proposing to implement a, um, one percent or one cent per gallon tax on gasoline and diesel fuel. This money will be earmarked for all capital projects, and, um, we are estimating about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, revenue for this in our capital projects fund. And the earliest we can get it implemented will be on April first. Um, and we do have a breakdown, so you can see what our surrounding municipalities are charging for the ga- their municipal gas tax. So we will be about one cent less than others.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
I just wanted to see what that said about it.
Yes, so if we are deciding to, um, fully fund some of our lead services with this route, we can increase it by point one cent to two cents, and we'll be, um, compatible with our surrounding municipalities.
So that would give us.
Then we can take that out of our order.
Five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, put a little care down there, because I felt like it was maybe a little easier to stomach a year.
Two hu- we are proposing two hundred and fifty right now.
Right, but I'm trying to go back to, um, the number that we were looking at to, um, replace the number of lead service lines over the years and divide it out. I think it was like three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year we were looking at, somewhere around in there.
And so two fifty times two is five hundred thousand, that's more than that.
So I thought that this, when I, I didn't realize, for one, that Eldron was at four cents, which is quite a bit. I mean, I don't know how many people go to Eldron to get their gas, but for, we haven't had one at all for forever. Everybody else has, you know, I don't, didn't, won't do the research on this, but I don't know of any municipalities that don't have one, except for us, which I was kinda surprised to see, but in any event, it's difficult to stomach the increases that we're proposing for the water and sewer rates. So if we wanted to fund some of those capital projects, with a portion of this to go higher, we could do that. And Brandis is gonna get to some slides at the end, which show the options for the water and sewer rates, because that's another thing we need direction on. So if we wanna do one cent, that's an option. If we wanna do two cents, I would say, then we can reduce the amount that we are going to propose for the water and sewer rate increase, and we can fund the lead service line replacements, as long as money.
As long as we do.
I.
Right.
Yes, because otherwise.
I'm mixed on that, I'm mixed on that, but.
Yeah.
Go up.
I.
That's a board discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
This isn't motor fuel tax, then, are we restricted by the state when it comes to the percentage that we can, or any municipality can tax on gasoline apart from motor fuel?
You can do it under your home rule authority.
And is, is it because we have home rule that allows us to do this? Because if we didn't have home rule, we wouldn't be able to do this.
Well, you can, but, well, I take that back. The way that the, the state statute is written is really only for communities in Cook County.
Great, but you, we'd have to petition the state to get this done, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Erica, do you know what West Dundee is?
Right here.
You're on it. Oh, obviously I can't read.
And that's a, it feels like it's, it would just be putting us in line with our closest neighbors.
Yeah.
So the other, and let me just, so some of the other potential capital projects that we would have, um, that we wanna be considering for this to support would be the road improvements, because we've got so much going on with all of the truck parking and everything else. Um, so that's where I'm feeling like the more that we have these trucks coming in and out of the village to do their parking and gassing up and all that kinda good stuff, that, um, that the village is now incurring a lot of cost to help support these parking lot owners, and that, um, that, that's where I would really like to, I would prefer to see this revenue go towards over the water. that's where I would really like to, I would prefer to see this revenue go towards over the water and, and the, the water, um, rates and that kinda thing.
So, are we saying the one percent or two, or one cent or two cent?
I think we will circle back to that.
Okay.
I think, well, first of all, is everybody comfortable with the gas tax, even if it's.
Yes.
Rich, he's ten percent.
Just match rich here, let's go nineteen.
So, we're comfortable in, in implementing this, we'll just decide on the rate once we have the conversation about what's coming next.
Yeah, I feel like the two percent being equal with what's around us puts us in a much better spot to not be the most expensive water rates in the area. Since those are kind of high, I'd rather bring this up to at least the two, two cents.
Yeah.
To fix the other problem.
I agree.
Agreed. But we can officially hold until the next slides.
Yeah, the tricky part about it is, is the timing, so we can go ahead and propose, you know, we, we don't have any tax on gasoline right now, we go one cent, we're gonna do whatever we do with it, great, we do a second penny, then we can go ahead and put that money towards some of the capital improvement that being the lead lines. As long as we are diligent about adjusting the water rates as a result of this tax, then we're okay. But oftentimes, what happens is we're gonna go ahead and implement the increased water rate, then on this, on the back end, or the back end, get the tax coming in,
Once all the lead lines are in.
And the water rates are never adjusted subsequently, and that's what I don't wanna see, so in other words, what happens is that residents get hit with both. Now, in this instance, not everybody in, who's buying gasoline in East Dundee is an East Dundee resident, so that is a good thing, I suppose, when it comes to, you know, funding some of these capital improvement projects, we're doing it with outside residents' money, in a sense, but as, as long as we're, you know, diligent about adjusting the water rates as a result of the increase in this gas tax, then we're okay, so, just keep that in mind.
Our next revenue, um, is a proposed increase to the downtown and Dundee crossings BDD. We currently have a point seven five percent tax for the BDD, and we are proposing to increase it to one percent. The increase will go towards supporting the bond payment for the parking garage, it will only be for this, um, BDD area, um, downtown, and we are estimating an increase, uh, of a hundred thousand dollars, and this will be in effect January, or sorry, July first, twenty twenty-five.
Can you clarify, um, you said that it would only be in the downtown, but Dundee crossings is up on twenty-five and seventy-two.
Yeah, so we have, uh, three BDDs, so, I'm, what I'm just saying that it will not impact, or the other two BDDs will not be impacted, or we will not increase those, um, tax rates for those two BDDs, just this one.
And those other two are in what area?
Uh, it's Christina Drive and also Dund- Dundee Gateway, um, I can show you, I can email out a map of those areas. But this is specific for this downtown area, up a little through, uh, seventy-two as well.
Okay.
So, that's on a one hundred dollar bar bill, twenty, twenty-five cents more.
Yeah.
Now, the only thing this, that makes the idea of an increase in the BDD tax more palatable is the fact that the BDD is limited time-wise. So, when you consider how much time is left on the BDD, if the, if the idea of increasing this from three quarters to one percent, and the revenue coming in from that over the length of the time left on the BDD is really all we're looking to do, then that's one thing. But I would really caution us from raising the BDD, if we're gonna continue the BDD, it'll expire, we just go ahead and extend it, which we want to do, then it's gonna increase the price of everything sold in the BDD. So, what I would suggest we look at is just a liquor tax, we don't have that, and considering that the vast majority of the money's coming in, especially from the downtown, BDD area, is liquor, if we were just to concentrate on that, rather than a food and liquor and ice cream and everything else that we sell, uh, we would probably make every bit as much, if not more, by just having a straight liquor tax as opposed to a BDD increase.
But it would be a higher increase on liquor itself.
Perhaps, but we don't have anything right now, a lot of towns are at three, four, even up to six percent, if we were to do a one percent, let's say, that's, you know,
Yeah.
A penny on a dollar, you know, so it's, you know, on, on a, on a five dollar glass of beer, we're talking about a nickel increase.
So, we did talk about this in the past, isn't it also, like this, we'd have to do this for seventy years to pay for the car parking garage, so I think that there is a liquor tax discussion.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
On subsequent pages, or no?
Well, we did have a pretty robust discussion about a food and beverage tax versus a liquor tax versus an increase in the BDD tax, uh, when we were talking about how we were gonna fund the parking garage, and the, the, the disadvantage, I mean, there's pros and cons to everything. The disadvantage to doing a liquor tax or a food and beverage tax is that the merchant has to collect that and remit that manually to us, so there's an administrative burden on the business operator. The BDD tax is collected as part of state taxes, and so it's just lumped in with the sales tax, the state collects it, the, the business owner doesn't have to do anything. So, this is sort of the easiest thing for a business to increase the amount of revenue we need to pay for the parking garage over time. If we had to, I mean, we could, we could poll the businesses and say, what would you rather do? Have somebody on your staff, collect this tax, remit it, they're gonna, there's a cost for that, or, or maybe they would prefer that versus this, but.
What is the, what is this lifespan on this BDD?
There's a little less than ten years left, which is about as much time as we need to pay for our.
Pay off the bar.
And it, and it, excuse me, we'd also have to consider whether or not we're intending to extend it. And if we do, by the way, do we have to get the same kind of buy-in from other governmental units?
It's not as easy to, it's not as easy to extend as, as one might think, so I, I would think, I would, I would recommend we don't look at this as something we plan to extend. But.
Well, if the use of it, or if the idea behind the increase right now, and it's gonna be administratively the easiest route to go, and our extent, and our idea, or our intention, rather, is not to go beyond the life of the current BDD, and between now and the end of it, it will get us what we need as far as the net goes, then, yeah, it, it, it seems like it's the, it's the way to go, but it's, it's gonna affect more than just, you know, what we sell, the majority of what we sell is liquor, you know, that's the, that's the line share.
And I would say, for the sake of conversation, when people bring concerns about this, this, what I always convey is, West Dundee has one percent already, and they have for years.
Right.
So, and on top of that, they also had a, had a food and beverage on top of it, so they're.
So, they got a liquor tax and it, or are you talking about?
They have a food and beverage tax, so they're, I think it's, do you remember what it is, three, three percent? Um, so they're doing one percent plus three percent, so their total is four.
And the one percent of what, BDD or?
One percent BDD, whatever their food and beverage taxes.
Okay. And then food and beverage on top of that.
Which they put in place after the recession in two thousand eight, so they had it for, for, so, it just makes our businesses a little more competitive if we don't have that food and beverage tax.
Yes, thank you for the recap, I do remember now, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're on to board initiatives, I received three requests from board members and, uh, wanted to get consensus from the board as to whether or not we should include it in the budget. So, those three items were, uh, Open Data, which is a, uh, community engagement software that tracks trends and provides alert notifications to residents. This will be an ongoing cost, and I think Franco is the three-year cost, uh, nine thousand each year? Yeah, so it's about ten thousand dollars each year, and we have a three-year contract right now, um, that we would look to engage.
So, help me out then, we're talking about spending twenty-eight thousand dollars over the next three years to provide information to the public apart from what we're able to do on our website?
Yes, so this will be more related to crime statistics, um, any, Franco?
Well, this is something the police department was working on, trustee Sutter asked us to have a, um, portal for the public to click on and explore, uh, crime mapping and data updates that's something more intuitive than just Excel download. So, uh, the police department was, uh, was able to find a low-cost solution that already integrates already with their software. And it will allow them to easily download, uh, almost real-time, uh, maybe a day later of, of crime that has occurred, and they can tailor it and how, uh, to communicate this and hopefully integrate it with the V I S map on the website.
So, this is going towards the Open Data?
Yeah, to give more transparency to citizens so that they can see without having to pull a FOIA on the police department to say, uh, I want to know about this neighborhood, how many burglaries have happened in the last three years, show up on a map that they can click and get details, or how many DUIs or arrests or accidents that happen, but would give visibility to the public to the data that the police collect on crime.
But this would only be for public consumption, correct? I mean, cause the information that it's providing.
For us as well, like if we needed to poll information before.
Over public stuff?
Well, no, but I'm, what I'm saying is that the information that we're talking about making available is a ma- is available already through other means.
Yeah, not illegal, uh, private information that we're not allowed to share, this is public information that we are.
Right, no, but I'm, what I'm saying is if we wanted to get crime statistics, or if anybody wanted to get it, they could just go to the chief and find out that information. This is gonna make that, this is gonna make that effort easier, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially, but it isn't gonna be providing anything that we can't currently get.
And further, and further transparency in government is always a good goal.
Yeah, we wouldn't be pulling, um, our resources every time anybody wanted any stats, and really, honestly, uh, residents probably won't go through the bother of doing a FOIA and calling up the police, that they probably are looking, if you look at other suburbs, um, there's very robust public open data on all kinds of things that you can look up as a citizen to be more informed about whatever issue you're concerned about. We don't know the issue that they're concerned about until they reach out, but if we have a portal that has a lot of basic data they could pull themselves, then they're more informed and they don't have to call up the police to do that.
Okay.
What kind of alerts?
Yeah, what about the alerts, what does that mean?
Are these like emergency alerts, or alerts that your street is closed, or that there's a storm coming?
I think this was a geographic alert to a specific area, like a neighborhood, to say, I want an email if there's a burglary that happens in this area that I live in. I could be wrong, but I thought that that was on the demo.
This is all, yeah, crime related, and there is another software that we did present, um, that would be for those types of
What?
Notifications like, uh, water main breaks or things like that, that are non-crime related.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would it be a good idea to say, yeah, let's put this in the budget, and then maybe get a presentation on what this actually does?
Yeah, I would like this.
And maybe even two presentations for another company that does something similar.
Or other villages who've used it.
Yeah, but at least we have this in our back pocket that we can, uh, purchase.
And there is a demo video that could be circulated that Franco showed me, that we'll watch, I think it was, uh, being presented to the Elgin Police Department, but it's a demo of what this interface looks like and how you look things up, so.
I do think that integrates already with what we have, you know, that makes it less cumbersome on our police department.
Yes.
We can definitely do that.
Okay, I like that too.
And actually, I misspoke, it's nine grand to set up and then fifty-one hundred each year thereafter.
Oh, okay.
That's better. And yeah, was I wrong about the.
So, we're looking at like twenty grand on a three-year contract-ish.
Community alerts, like is this also a water main broke, and we can send it out through this system, or is this a totally different, I thought they were two different.
No, they're different.
Two sep- yeah, two separate.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the head shakes from over here.
Yeah.
Well, we can put it in the budget, and then we'll do a demo next year, January, February, and then everybody can decide proceed or not proceed, and if we don't proceed, we can always look at it the following year.
Sounds good.
Okay, the second item, um, is for Halloween decorations, and this would be in the depot area, we would incorporate this into our general fund budget.
Is this, is this something that Public Works would end up putting up in that, another private company like Christmas stuff?
Yes. No. No, not, no, not.
You know, I did put this in, I just want you all to imagine a twelve-foot skeleton sitting on a chair, and how amazing that would be.
Oh my god, yeah.
I think our beretum does really cool, nice stuff, so, yeah, I think we have, we have the space for it.
Yeah, yeah, especially, we were there, when, you know, we kinda said, oh, we should be doing something, we don't do anything, we decorate all this stuff for Christmas, Halloween is the best holiday in the year.
So, we had, we had some conversations in, in committee about various decorations for this, or for the depot, I think they all kinda fell by the wayside with, um, the, a thousand things, I like this, this kind of a step in the direction of kind of making some changes to the depot, and, you know, lights and decorations and all sorts of fun things, so it can be the front yard, so it can be our town's front yard.
Maybe a ghost train.
To start.
Great.
All right, and the final item is to increase the Arts Council budget from forty thousand to sixty thousand, and it will enhance community through art installations and events, um, and this will be expensed from our downtown and Dundee crossings BDD.
So, the Arts Council was fifty and dropped to forty, and now we need to go up to sixty.
Somebody has to explain fifty grand.
Not, not going back to fifty?
Well, the reason is because it was brought to forty, and ten thousand was given to the depot council that didn't exist.
Right, which never was used, cause there isn't one.
Exactly, and next year, well, the, uh, the Christmas decorations doubled in cost to like ten grand, so that's already, would be a quarter of our budget. Um, and then, we have the, uh, art show that's gonna be at five different locations now, and we have plans for, um, sculptures and just a lot of other things that I would like the ten thousand that we should have had, and the fifteen that was original, and so, hey, I'm, I'm.
Hey, I gotta somebody's bitter.
And if you look at the, like the riverfront development plan, I think there are at least six sculptures identified, uh, one identified for possibly out here where we make this courtyard.
Somebody's bitter. Yeah. No, no, I've. Yes.
Um, there are a lot of projects that even one sculpture is pretty pricey, we're working with West Dundee to look at the three pedestals, one in the middle of the Fox River that was used for giant chains to dredge ice a long time ago, now we just have a sculpture pedestal in the middle of the river, and then one on either side. Um, so we're looking at possibly putting sculptures on all of those and working with West Dundee on, agreeing on something. It's in early discussions, but all of these, when you do a sculpture, it's much more expensive than a painting, and it's much more permanent, so that is why I tried to cost them.
And we did get permission from.
Does the Army Corps have to get involved?
DNR and, uh.
What's that?
What, we got permission from DNR and.
The DNR, we get permission from.
Army Corps of Engineers.
Oh, you did, awesome, great.
So, West Dundee's on board with the idea of putting in sculptures?
One of their trustees came, one of their trustees came to our Arts Council meeting, and so, yeah, we're bridging the gap.
Look at that, art brings everyone together.
Chris Nelson appointed a trustee to be in this.
I love it.
Well, it's gonna be a difficult go for you to explain.
I just did.
A thirty percent or a twenty percent increase in the water rates when we're talking about spending fifty grand on Arts Council stuff.
Oh, no, the, no, do you know how many people have said, thank you, we needed this?
No, I don't.
A lot of people, a lot of people.
Okay, I'm just saying, when they get, if their water bill, it's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's a difficult go at all. Their, their water bill's not going up huge because we're putting art in the community, there's many other things we're doing that are letting. Their, their water bill is not going up huge because we're putting art in the community. There's many other things we're doing that are letting.
No, but it's not going down because we're doing the Arts Council stuff.
You just don't like art, so you just have an attitude about it.
I have no problem with it. I'm seeing, you know, it's like.
I don't know, this, it's a pleasant thing. Like, why do you have to bring the community to something pleasant?
Because we're talking about spending a whole load of money here, Trish, on something that, you know, we're a small little town.
And art heals and, and it, people are loving it.
Okay.
But we're just proposing this idea to the board, but we leave it to the board to decide.
Yes.
Could we, could we think about going back to the original fifty and then as, like, some of the big projects, like the sculptures come before? We can look at, like, do appropriations for that.
One-off, yeah, and not only that.
Something like that, I mean.
Wasn't the original budget twenty-five?
No, I think it was fifty.
Uh, the first, the first year was twenty-five.
Yeah, so what, what was the cause or need? We didn't have any discussion of going from twenty-five to fifty.
Yeah, we did last year.
I mean, it's a budget every year.
Totally did, it was in the budget discussion.
It doesn't just magically go away, you have a budget for it.
Question Sarah, yeah, I think that makes sense that we could do fifty and then if there's a big sculpture that we want permission, we can ask for permission and increase for that sculpture.
Big sculptures, like you said, Erica, could be something even way beyond and over our budget if it's something that's worthwhile, so. I mean, we were looking at some bronze just to know and it was how, how much? Twenty, twenty grand?
Yeah.
Um, it would be in our, our entire budget to do, yeah, just that, uh, the river sculptures are only six foot high, which we wanted to go a little higher, but uh, we're just getting early pricing right now, so we aren't proposing this yet, but.
Yeah, I do, I think that something like that, especially in conjunction with West Dundee, is sort of like a special project outside of just the budget for the Arts Council, to me, at least, like, that's a different thing, so.
If we could separate that out and say that's something totally different, then I'm so good.
Well, it's a different proposed sort of thing, you know, um, but yeah, you know, I've taken it back to what it was supposed to be.
At fifty.
At fifty.
I'm fine with that. We can separate out the big projects that we were worried about hitting our buzzers.
I just think it's a money pit.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm just, I like the idea of art, I like the idea of the Arts Council. I just think that's an extreme amount of money at the budget for, because once it's in the budget, now it's gonna be the goal of the Arts Council to spend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, let's spend, you know, it's, it's.
On great projects, to make people happy. There's nothing wrong with that. And look at how much expenses on the arts, like music and all the events that we do, that is a, a branch of the arts and I don't see a lot of complaints there.
No.
And that's a lot more money for us.
Oktoberfest alone probably has a higher arts budget than ours, which is done after one day or one weekend, um, like, and we're not complaining about the music that's put on and.
We're spending a hundred and thirty grand on community events and that's all of them.
Yeah, that's a lot more than we're spending on all of the art and we have art to show afterwards.
An event for one day, that's the point.
Yeah, if you missed it, you missed it, but yeah, this, this is how art works. There's a cost to it and people enjoy it and uh, it's a small percentage.
I have a little factoid to share, because why not? Uh, this is not, not necessarily art, but there's over seven thousand sculptures in the United States commemorating historical figures and a sculpture is often considered art, but it's also considered education if it's commemorating some historical person of importance. So of those seven thousand sculptures recognizing people in the history of this country, only twenty are women.
I'm not surprised at that at all.
Six thousand nine hundred and eighty are men. So should the Arts Council ever decide, after they do some really cool sculptures that don't commemorate a person, because it'd be cool to have a sculpture that's just a sculpture. If you ever delved into the arena of a sculpture commemorating a person, it would be great if it was a woman. That's my thought.
Well, if we wanna put a statue up to Dolores, I'm okay with that.
Standing tall in the Fox River.
Did you do any research about how many twelve-foot skeletons in the United States are?
Those get them for touring.
Right. Did you respect it or did I correct it?
People know if it's a female skeleton or not, though.
Thanks, Erica. You're gonna get started on that.
I think we could put one of those pink beanies on the skeleton.
You, you are. Boner tonight.
All right, we're gonna take us back to real estate.
I just wanna make sure I have what I think I hear as consensus, which is for open data. We'll add it to the budget and do a demo sometime in January, February. If you guys decide to move forward, the money's there. If not, money not lost. Um, we'll add the Halloween decorations and we'll drop the Arts Council request to fifty thousand.
And as far as the Halloween decorations go, I'm sorry, I'm in the business and I would really like it if we are not just buying stuff that gets thrown away and that it's something that we can store and reuse year after year. If we're gonna spend money.
Yes.
Well, Phil, how much room do you have for ten twelve-foot skeletons? In your, uh, salt shed?
I said we could put them on top of the salt.
There you go.
Thirty feet of that.
Well, preserved.
Right.
Well, I'm all for it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sustainable too.
Our final discussion is on the water rates.
Oh boy.
Just a quick overview of the six main projects that we do have, um, or that we have identified. Well, one is not a project. Um, so well, six rehab, the, the surface finds, water tower painting, stand pipe repairs, sewer repairs, and then potentially the repayment of I E P A loan. So those are the.
Why do you say potentially?
I'm sorry?
You said potentially repay the loan.
Well, not, you're correct. The repayment of the I E P A loan, yes, not potential. We will be paying back our debt. Um, so I, uh, broke down the options that were presented at our last meeting as far as the direction we can go, um, for the water rates. We can go with option one, which is to continue our current schedule as adopted previously. The proposed rate increase for twenty-five is three percent for both water and sewer. Um, if we go this option, we do not, we do not set ourselves up to fund any future capital projects and we just maintain status quo as is. Option two, which will maintain the current rate structure, um, but it will increase the water rates to ten percent and the sewer rates by three percent. There will be no change in the fixed meter charge and this scenario does set us up to fully realize the capital plan that we previously saw. Option three is a tiered rate structure, so this will be a change in the um, cha- in, in the rate change that we have, or I'm sorry, in the rate plan structure that we have currently. This will increase the sewer rate by three percent and the water rate will be tiered um, and it will be tiered based upon usage for the user with the first rate being ten percent, the second tier at fifteen percent and the third tier at twenty percent. The fixed meter rate will change for water only by two dollars and this option will help us to partially realize the capital projects, um, that we have identified for completion.
Can I ask a question before we start arguing? With the gas tax proposal, how does that play in?
It does not.
So if we went up to two cents?
So I would suggest if you did wanna go with the two percent, that we would take something in the middle of option one and option two. So instead of doing three or ten, let maybe do five or six.
So can I ask, Phil, you might wanna.
And then, I'm sorry, just let me, I forgot to mention, it's because we're not gonna be able to start the gas tax January one, so we're not gonna get a full year. We're only gonna get it from April one on and then we could see how it comes in because it's an estimate and if it comes in really strong, the next year we might be able to go back to three percent instead of doing another ten. So I just wanna be conservative on not, not spending money we don't get.
No. I would not want to then make that a permanent increase. I would want to make sure it was stated that we'll go up by whatever percentage for this year and to be reassessed. Right. Next year, as opposed to, sometimes we, we do something where it's like, well, now we have the money, so we're going to assume that it's available, right, and that I don't wanna.
We even said it is only a temporary increase that resorts automatically back to three percent.
Yeah.
Until we up it again to force us to.
Something, yeah, if, if, if that's the path we go, that's how I'd wanna phrase it.
Which tax did you say then, Sarah?
This, if we go, if we choose something in between, if we choose to have the gas tax be two cents instead of one, then we, as Erica suggested, we could go somewhere between option one and two, where we're not at three percent, but we're not going all the way to ten.
Right, no, okay.
And we would set it, if we choose to do that, I would wanna make sure that whatever we do, we are purposefully doing it only for one year and we are, we have to reassess every year.
Automatically reset back to three percent after the first year.
Well, I don't know that there's ever been a temporary tax, but yeah, we'd have to look at it.
I mean, I, I wanna, you know, I don't want it to become whatever the, you know, just to sort of automatically become five.
So, didn't, didn't the schedule for option two actually end up going down after the first couple of years to like seven percent or?
I think it was, um, ten percent for eight years.
Or was I looking at the, was that option three?
I think option three, and option three is the tiered plan, so that's possible that it did change.
O- option two, you're saying was a ten percent increase every year for the first eight years?
On the water side.
On the water side.
Okay, and that is not only gonna get us the capital improvement money we need for all six of those projects, but it's also gonna get us to a fully funded project or a fully funded, uh, fund. Where we're not, we're not gonna have to subsidize the water fund then from any other fund. It will be fully supported by user fees.
We, we did not discuss the potential for the gas tax with Baxter Women, so they will probably have to run another analysis or so, maybe in another year after we see how it goes.
Well, because we won't have any data until we actually get through that, how we through the upcoming year, we won't actually realize it. I comprehend. Yeah, I comprehend the need to get through next year, but I'd like to see us implement the gas tax at two cents, direct competition with every surrounding community or lower than Elgin and not go the full ten percent, go five, four, three, six.
Whatever the, whatever the calculation.
Well, the calculations are for ten.
So each one of these options gets us to a fully supported fund?
No.
Through user fees?
No.
Option three doesn't.
Well, because, except for the, uh, the capital improvements, I mean, option one.
Only option two gets us where we are fully addressing all of our capital needs and maintaining our current responsibilities.
Being self-sustained with the water fund.
But this is over the course of, this isn't like in twenty, twenty-five, this will work.
No, it's over eight years.
Eight years, so, yeah, I don't wanna.
And so if we go, if we were to go option one, we, we, you're saying we do not get to a self-sustaining, uh, water fund?
Not with trying to implement the projects.
Not, yeah, projects aside, if we were just to go with option one on a three percent increase every year, would that get us to, after eight years, get us to a self-sufficient fund?
No.
Uh, through user fee?
Without the capital.
Without the capital improvement?
I don't know. It's hard to say, just because the water fund is not, yeah, the water fund is, the waters, the water rates and fees that we get are not sustaining the water operating side. We're supplementing and why we combine our sewer together is because the sewer is fully self-sustaining, so we're supplementing kinda with the sewer side to support the water side.
Right, okay.
Well, I guess the two-cent gas and five percent or something, sounds good.
And then reevaluate same time next year.
Yeah.
Does anybody feel comfortable with that?
Same bad channel.
The proposal is a two percent gas, a two-cent gas tax with a five percent rate increase on the water side.
Yeah.
And three on the sewer?
But can we? That, that's not gonna, that's not gonna address all your capital needs.
So we will still proceed with all the capital projects.
Option two will get us there, right?
Not at five percent.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is.
But with the two percent gas, because that's not factor, or two cent gas.
But worse, we don't have the calculations to prove that.
Right, right, option two's reads right there will get us all the capital improvement.
In eight years, I just wanna restate, in eight years, not next year.
Right, yeah.
Like, this is all over the course of eight years, so this, that's why for next year I would like to not go all the way with that and just limit the increase, increase on the gas tax and then have the reassessment. Maybe the gas tax doesn't bring in what we expect and we really need, like, we have to do this, we absolutely have to do this. Maybe it brings in more than what we think and then woo-hoo, we don't have to, like, we can take it back to three or leave it at five or. It's implementing the gas tax changes the information we have on the other two options, so that's why.
I have a question and a correction. So my correction is option three would also be fully funded within the eight-year period of time, so I misspoke there.
Okay. I don't like three either.
What?
I don't, he said, I don't like option three, I don't even.
I mean, I didn't like that it would be seniors in tier three, but if they weren't, then this seems like there's some merit to option three where it would only be very large corporations that go through tons and tons of water, would take a little bit more than the resident.
I guess that depends on if you consider Santa's Village a large corporation, because they would definitely fall into that gap, I would imagine.
It also would definitely weigh in on their decision for that, uh.
Water park.
Lazy River.
Lazy River.
They never know how this would play into that, so I would like to see us go smoother, easier option with two, smoother. See about what the gas tax will do for us with revenue. Maybe we don't drop it from ten to five, maybe we drop it from ten to eight or ten to seven, who knows? Leaving sewer rates as they are or, you know, based on option two, if they're gonna go up by three percent, it'll be that alone. But if, if the gas, if an increase in gas tax can ease the pain on this, then I'd say, yeah, let's absolutely do it, but the idea of, of hitting, you know, I mean, you have to consider the, if they were, if it were to affect somebody like Santa's Village's decision to put in that lazy river, right, what's that gonna do to the revenue? The revenue that's coming in off of that would definitely increase and it's all amusement tax. That all comes right to the village, the whole five percent. So if they decide not to do it, what that, what does that cost? It's the opportunity cost of, of an increase like this has gotta be considered, so.
Yeah, I'm willing to drop the option three idea for Santa's Village. I wasn't thinking of those guys.
Yeah, just drop the idea of option three altogether.
Can I ask you a question? Are those numbers correct for option three? Because it seems to me that the way that's written is that it's the same as option two plus more. Everybody's paying ten percent, but some people are paying fifteen or twenty percent.
As I recall.
Whereas in option two, everybody's paying ten percent, but then at the bottom it says option two is only gonna partially fund.
Yeah, so that's a, uh, I missed, that's incorrect. It will fully fund, um, the eight-year, over eight-year period, the capital project, so that's incorrect.
Yeah, that last line should be under option one.
Oh.
Like the fixed meter charge for water only?
No, the one that said this option allows partial contribution, that should be under option one.
Apologies for that. Now, the tiered option is like, once you, so if you're using eleven thousand, say, ten, ten thousand gallons will be at the ten percent and then a one gallon will be at that fifteen percent.
But that would mean that option three is bringing in more money than option two.
Which is why it was stated earlier, if you go with option three, the ten percent is a. Which is why it was stated earlier, if you go with option three, the ten percent isn't leveled, it goes down over time.
I see.
Yes.
Whereas option two, the ten percent is level for the full eight years.
Gas chip. That makes sense.
Hmm.
Well, it's got it's all factored without the gas tax.
So we can buy ourselves a year and evaluate the gas tax. And everybody with five percent was put out there. Is that where we're comfortable?
Yeah.
Even seven. If we were able to reduce it a little bit, we could see.
Well, we're not reducing it, we're increasing it.
We're increasing it from three to seven or three to ten or three to five.
What I think a lot of us have said is five.
But the increase in water rates at ten percent with the gas tax would be an increase in water rates to five percent. Instead of raising it by ten, by ten percent, it would only increase it by five. In the event we were to get the revenue, we think we're going to get off the gas tax.
And it's only for one year and we're reassessing that and then we could change the percentage accordingly once we get data.
Does that put us behind on being able to execute these projects and have safe drinking water?
For this year.
For this.
What it, what it does is if the gas tax doesn't come in as we think it will, then next year, we're probably going to have to do ten. Yep. If it does, then maybe next year, we're at seven or eight or five again, depending on how it comes in. But there's not a scenario where we're going to be at three forever. Right. Oh, for sure. I just don't want to go from three to ten.
Right.
Implement the gas tax as well and then realize we didn't need the ten, like we didn't need to go all the way to ten. I'd rather do incremental increase to, from three to five with implement the gas tax.
Step it up.
And then next year, say that didn't do it, five's not going to work, we need to go to six or seven.
You still have the option to do ten this year. And then depending upon how the gas comes in, if it is over, then you reduce.
But that never happens. I mean, that's a lot less likely to happen that we.
Rather incrementally increase than go all the way.
Increase it over time.
I don't want to shock.
Part of, part of.
Shocking, shocking numbers.
Can I get clarification? So when we're talking about the gas tax and the two percent or two cent, we were initially funding capital projects. So are we taking all of it for water sewer?
Half of it.
We're adding the one penny.
Okay.
We originally budgeted one penny per gallon, which was going to go to all capital. Now we're budgeting two pennies per gallon.
Okay, so one penny for water sewer.
Wouldn't lead pipes be considered a capital project or not?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't lead pipe replacement be considered a capital project?
Yes, it is.
So they.
Yeah, but we have other capital projects besides water and sewer.
No, I know. I'm just saying, we're not really changing.
When Baxter and Woodman came to us with this too, I asked him then what the magic was behind eight years. And he really didn't give us a good answer, only that that's usually how they assess this. They project out these estimates and they use an eight-year, you know, timeframe, which is legitimate, that's fine. But we're not bound to it. If we have to borrow, for instance, Illinois EPA monies for some of these capital improvement projects and they have to be twelve or fifteen year bonds to do it, that's what we're, that's what we're facing. I mean, there's no, nothing handcuffs us to this eight-year projection, but in other words.
I mean, realistically, we could update the rate study annually, but to do a comprehensive.
That's a good question.
Reevaluation of our rate study should probably be every five years.
How much does it cost to do a rate study?
This one was, gosh, I want to say it's around forty, as I recall.
Forty dollars?
About forty dollars.
Forty thousand dollars.
That's why, that's why I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. We're spending a lot of money to have experts tell us what to do based on what our situation is. And then we're going, never mind.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just asking what the magic was with the number that they used as a projection into the future in order for us to get this done. I asked about why did, why was eight years chosen? And I was wondering if that correlated to the initial study we did.
I don't think she was talking to you.
No, she's talking to the rest of us.
Right, I think it's.
I am.
It's a little bit of semantics. Do you consider lead pipes to be a water and sewer infrastructure project or a capital improvement project? We put it into the waterfront and we said we're going to fully fund it. So it, you know, you could make the case for either way, which is why I could propose this idea of the gas tax for the extra penny. If we didn't lump lead service lines into the water fund and we just put it in the capital fund, we wouldn't be necessarily increasing the water rate as much. Certainly, we're still increasing it because there's tons of other water towers and wells and projects, but.
Loans. I just think ten percent is a shocking amount to jump to. And that just doesn't sit well.
Ten percent every year.
Yeah, it just doesn't sit well with me. I get concerned for residents.
Well, and we did that without the consideration, like we had the assessment done without the consideration of the gas tax as part of the information they had in front of them when they were making their recommendations. So that's, that is.
Any, any supplemental whatsoever, to be honest.
Right.
Yeah. It's a good point.
So I heard five, I heard seven. Do we have a consensus on somewhere?
I'm okay anywhere in there. If you run the numbers and say, oh, the magic number looks like six. Do you need to assess with the other numbers to see what balances us?
Gas cash and then run the numbers, right?
Well, our assumption on the gas tax.
Is the assumption of the one percent, one twenty-five?
Yeah, because we have information on what gas stations.
So before.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Before in the next meeting, we'll come up with a staff recommendation based on our calculation of those factors.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
I think we got to the end.
The one penny gas tax, though, the two hundred and fifty thousand estimate is pretty easy and pretty accurate to suggest, correct? Simply because we know how many gallons of gas we sell in the town. Multiply that by a penny, you have a fairly good idea of how much revenue you'll be generating, correct?
I do not know that we know exactly how many.
Usually it's a lump sum. We'll try to get a breakdown of ourselves.
I was thinking we knew for sure how many gallons we, you know, sell. So figuring out how much revenue we could generate would be pretty easy. Okay.
To be continued.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all. Any questions?
We did ask a question.
That's what it's for. Thank you.
Article eight, you don't have to do this in another four months.
Okay, thank you, Brindis. That'll take us to reports. Let's start with Andy. Uh, no reports. Trish?
No report.
Rich?
No report.
Scott?
Um, yeah, I got word that Dan Sella, former Eastundy board member, his wife passed away.
Whoa.
On the sixteenth?
What's that?
Sixteenth. She doesn't settle?
Right. Um, I wonder if the village should send flowers, you know, that.
Oh, man.
I could send you the link to the services and all that.
You can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Kathleen?
What's the next meeting?
Two weeks, December second.
December second, okay. Parade of lights is coming up, Dickens is coming up. Great job on the Arts Council, using your fabulous budget on the lights and the trees and the decoration at the depot. Great job. Caleb on the new sign on the south side of the depot. It looks fabulous. And that's all, yeah.
There you go. Sarah?
No report.
No report. Okay, I'll go to Kelly. No. Chief?
No report.
All right. Brindis, I don't think you have, do you have?
I do actually. I found a link earlier today for the Shaziva plan. If you guys can include that by next, the twenty-seventh, that's a good one. It helps us to prioritize the votes that we established in our election.
Okay. All right. Phil, no report. Okay, I have nothing.
I have something.
Erica?
Two things, actually. The first is that the Christmas tree lights are on. Phil told me that there's been a request for us to turn the tree on and leave it on without the star being lit in advance because.
Oh. The countdown's the thing, man. The kids get a big kick out of that.
But a lot of money was spent and more people could enjoy it over the duration of time if we turn it on now. So board decision, I'm not going to make that decision, so.
Like, I'm tapping out on that.
Turn it on and turn it off Friday before.
Turn it off the day before. You don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do, like, let's leave it off the day before, like the week of or something.
And then just turn it on on Friday night?
And like on without the star.
Can we keep?
Some other elements.
Yeah. Can we keep the deer on?
One thought was we would, as of Friday of this week, our goal is to have all the snowflakes and all the downtown lights on, tree lights everything on. And with your concurrence, we'll include the tree without the star and also the deer.
Without the deer or with the deer?
With the deer. So then we'll leave that on through the Friday of Dickens. And then on Friday of Dickens, everything else will be on. And as we engage in ceremony, you know, from the tree, star.
So we could have the tree dark for the.
Yeah, why don't we leave the tree off and light the deer instead? Like just light, light up the deer around the tree.
Do you mean until Christmas?
No, until Dickens.
The tree lights.
Until the tree, like it's literally a tree lighting ceremony. Like, that's what we call it.
I'll go with that.
That's fine, the deer.
And then it stays on, you know, through the season.
Yeah, so we light everything but the tree.
Let's do it.
Is the tree already on? Is that what's on?
Magic by turning it on, but.
No, so I met with a couple of Arts Council members tonight and we turned the tree on. They just wanted to get a feel for.
Yeah.
Probably the additional lights. So as of now, I turned it off.
The ignition's down and they're ruined.
We paid for extra lights, who want to make sure that we're.
Yes, that's my concern. So I like, I like having everything except the tree. I like that a lot because then it's, you still have the tree lighting ceremony.
It loses its luster if it's on before.
Right.
Why do I even go to Dickens for the tree lights?
It's only two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, the sleigh rides are a whole thing, but.
Sounds like we planned very much.
And the horse ride.
Boy, that was a hard, that was a hard decision.
Sure.
Deer.
Second announcement is that I just wanted to officially welcome Caleb to being a full-time member. He's been the best intern. Now, happy to have him as a full-time employee.
Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, that conducts our complete staff reports. I believe we're going into executive session. We're going to adjourn into it. So that'll be closed to the public immediately under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meeting Act by V I L C S one twenty slash three. We will be discussing.
C eleven.
Which one is it now?
C eleven.
C eleven pending litigation.
Okay. Do you need a motion? We do.
That is.
I'm going.
So moved.
I'm not, which ends with all of us.
Adjourning, correct.
We're journeying from the.
So moved.
Kathleen?
Second.
Trustee Sartor?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
And trustee Trier?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. We'll see you in two weeks.
Didn't we have five?
Oh.
I'm going to take a five.
I will take, I promise I will.
Got new, what do you say, moneys? Well, they want to make sure they got new classics.
I don't think that there's new classics necessary.